Before we call our meeting to order, it was recommended that I let everyone know where the restrooms are. If you go straight through one of these doors there to the left. And also remind you, if anyone has chest pain, let the chief know and we'll take care of you. Okay? So hopefully, nobody will have heartburn or chest pain during this meeting tonight. So, thank you. You having trouble hearing?
Yeah.
So, is this microphone on?
Yeah.
Is that better? So, I really need to kind of be right on it. Restrooms all the way through. And if you have chest pain, let the chief know. We'll take care of you. Okay. The City of Southport Board of Aldrin Meeting, January 12th, 2023, is now called to order. Welcome to all of those who are here in attendance and those viewing virtually. I want to thank Chief Drew and the Fire Department for hosting us here today. What a great venue. So, thank you, Chief, for that. Our invocation tonight, most appropriately, will be by Chief Drew. And this will be followed by our Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Let us bow our heads to pray. O gracious and heavenly Redeemer, we humbly approach thy throne during this our present assembly. We are gathered to conduct the business of the City of Southport. And we ask, Lord, today, that you would help us. You have granted us thy grace to enter into this blessed new year. We claim blessings and prosperity and health to our citizens, our elected officials, and our staff members. Leaders today to make wise and prudent decisions in this meeting and give us understanding and knowledge. Keep our first responders and our armed services safe as they serve our country. And give Southport the greatest year that we've ever had. This we ask in Jesus's name. Amen.
... of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chief Drew, and hope and pray it is a great year for everyone in Southport in 2023 and for our city. Next item on our agenda is Item D, and that is the presentation of the City of Southport Parks and Recreation Master Plan. And I will call on Heather Hemphill to introduce our speaker.
All right. Is this on? Okay, you can hear me. My name is Heather Hemphill, and I'm the Director of Parks and Recreation for the City of Southport. And we do have master plans for our facilities and our programs. We do usually five-year master plans. We had, the master plan that we did have expired in '21, '22. So, we are now looking to do our new master plan. And I wanted to introduce Dr. Jim Hurstein. He did our last master plan, and he's actually done the master plans for most of the municipalities in Brunswick County. But he comes to us, he was a professor at NC State University Chapel Hill and UNCW in the Parks Recreation Leisure Services Department. He is retired from UNCW. And he was also the Parks and Recreation Director for the City of Chapel Hill. He has, and he also was the District Manager for the DCM KAMA out of Wilmington. He's got 20 years' experience in doing master plans. And he can, you know, explain that they're very vital documents to any department, any municipality. They guide and direct what we do and provide, and they're always based, you know, on the process of surveys and public meetings. So, I will step aside and let Dr. Hurstein explain the proposal for our '23 to '28 master plan.
Thank you, Heather. It's my pleasure to be here this evening. I've enjoyed doing master plans for local governments for over 20 years, as Heather said. And I've done most of them for the local governments in Brunswick County, Wilmington, Wrightsville Beach, Columbus County, as well as Brunswick County for it. So, I just have a few notes that I want to go over. And I'm not technically real good, so if I mess this up, just bear with me on that. But as Heather said, we've just completed the basic work for the 2023-2028 Parks Recreation and Open Space Master Plan for the City of Wilmington. And what is the purpose of a master plan? I like to identify four major purposes. One of those purposes is to assess, to analyze, and evaluate the existing leisure service delivery system of the local government. What are they doing program-wise? Were they doing facility park-wise? What's good, what's bad about it? The second thing is to stimulate an open public discussion of the needs for Parks and Recreation Delivery System in that local government area. And to bring the citizens together and to get input from them so that we can use that input to make the recommendations on. The third thing is, is that after that needs assessment, I call it, is to put together a plan of action, a document, a planning document that will hopefully guide the development and the implementation of the Parks and Recreation Delivery System, in this case, for the next five years. And a very important purpose for the master plan is, basically, Heather can't get grant money from state or federal agencies if she doesn't have a comprehensive master plan. And so, this is, I think, probably closely, the two major purposes, the plan of action and to allow Heather that opportunity to go after state and federal grant money. Now, the final product that comes out of this is, as I said, a living document, a planning document, that does lay out recommendations in five areas for the future growth and development of the leisure service delivery system. I like to call it a blueprint. It's a map. It just gives guidelines so that when budget time comes around, Heather has a document to go to and see what are the priorities that have been listed by the citizens through that needs assessment process. So, how was this public input obtained? I've been forgetting to push my buttons, haven't I? Remind me. I'm not technically inclined. Well, to begin with, we had a meeting with the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board and sat down with them on two occasions to get their input as to what they thought the guidance and direction should be for the next five years, as well as meeting with the Parks and Recreation Department staff. We conducted five interviews with key stakeholders that had been identified by Heather and her board, and I interviewed them individually. We conducted one public meeting. I will honestly say, we had three scheduled. We had two that nobody showed up to and only one that they showed up to. Now, I typically take that, I don't take that as a bad sign, because as probably most of you know, citizens come out to public meetings like that normally when they have complaints and they're not happy with what's going on. And so, the fact that we didn't have, and believe me, this is not the only local government that that's happened. Wilmington, same thing. But I didn't take that as a bad sign. But we did have the one. We got excellent input from that public meeting. We conducted an online community needs assessment. So, we had a, that ran for two months and was available in hard copy as well if people wanted to do it through the hard copy as well as the online. And I, as a Parks and Recreation professional, went through and did a personal analysis and evaluation of the programs and services, the areas and the facilities, and to make my recommendations based on my past experiences with these areas. Some pertinent information that came out of the online survey, one of the things that would, I'm hoping that all of you in here participated in that because we did have an excellent turnout for it. So, we about doubled the number that we did when we did this seven years ago. But one of the questions was, what are the five most important new and/or additional facilities, areas, and parks that you would like to see the city develop over the next five-year period? And those in priority order, number one was sidewalk and pedestrian lanes. Number two was bike lanes. Number three was indoor swimming pool. Number four was outdoor swimming pool. And number five was hiking trails, paths, off of it. The percentages ran from 43% of respondents listed the sidewalks and pedestrian lanes as their number-one priority, and 32% listed the hiking trails, paths, as theirs. So, between the five, there was really only about 11% difference. Percentages were actually, if you want them, it was 43, 42, 40, 36, and 32% of the respondents answered that way. Second question, that was another question, wasn't the second that was asked, was, which of these funding sources would you support to pay for these new and/or additional recreational facilities, areas, and parks? And people were given four choices and an other, which nobody filled out the other. But the choices were grants. 86% of the respondents stated that they would favor funding these through grants, hence one of the major purposes for the master plan document. 74% said private sources. 44% a general obligation bond referendum. And 28% property tax increase. So, obviously, the highest choice was grants, which is pretty standard and typical. But there is pretty strong support for private sources and the general obligation bond as well, which is good because it gives flexibility to the local government in terms of figuring out how to do these. The other ones, real quick, were approximately 34% of the survey respondents believe the City of Southport is bike-friendly, a safe place to bike. That's a very low percentage. 34%, approximately 42% of the respondents believe the existing facilities, areas, and parks provided by the department meet the needs of the members of their household. Again, a very low percentage. 41% believe that the existing programs, services, events, camps, and activities provided meet the needs of the members of their household. Again, a low percentage. And 83% of the survey respondents believe it is important that the city and the department provide new and/or additional recreational facilities, areas, and parks. That's a high percentage, obviously, for it. So, it's pretty, you know, that gives you a pretty clear picture that people are not real happy with everything that's going on, but are very supportive of having some additional and new things take place. The master plan's broken down into five recommendation areas. First of those is land acquisition. And basically, recommendations in the document for land acquisition are, there's more than two, but the two major ones that came out was land is needed for this non-vehicular pedestrian walking, hiking, biking, transportation network. The people are saying, not only do they want to do it on the roads, but they would like to have paths out into the woods, out into natural areas as well. The second one was the land adjacent to and contiguous to the property that's been known as Stevens Park on West Ninth Street. So, that's a high priority, is that if any other land adjacent to that land becomes available, it should be acquired. In terms of, second recommendations are basically in facilities, areas, and parks. And there's three primary, one of those, there's more, but the three major ones that I pulled out was one, the development of this non-vehicular pedestrian walking, hiking, biking, transportation network and system. Second is the construction of a comprehensive, multipurpose recreation center with a swimming pool. And three is various upgrades and improvements to the existing facilities, areas, and parks. Each one of the existing facilities, areas, and parks that the city had, the information was gathered as terms as to what should take place at those. So, we've got some big ticketing items like the transportation system and the recreation center, and then some smaller ticket items such as the improvements to the existing parks. Some of those improvements are anything from adding a swing to putting covers over the, for example, the swings and the benches that are down along the waterfront. Sun is a very important thing these days, and there are more and more people are wanting to get out from underneath the sun. Or building, you know, volleyball courts at some of the areas, or new playground structures, or a splash pad. In terms of program, service, event camp, and activity development, there's 10. I'm just going to show these real quick to you. These are new programs that should be, or at least increased or enhanced. Biking opportunities, adult fitness programs, swimming lessons, teen programs came up big all the time. Kayak trips. Southport City Gymnasium, meaning doing something more with it. Walking clubs, cooking classes, pickleball, sailing classes and lessons. So, those were the 10 major new services that came out through the assessment process. I have one thing that I call policy considerations in there. And these are things that don't have any things to really necessarily do with the building, but have just maybe something to do with in terms of a change that needs to be made and how things are done. But there's four of these that are major ones. There's more than that in the document. But the four major ones that came out of that was, the clear, number one, is that there should be the establishment of a Parks and Recreation Maintenance Division within the Parks and Recreation Department. Right now, when the department needs to have something done at one of its parks, has to work its way through the Public Works Department. And Heather has to wait for them, and sometimes she's not a real high priority because there's people being pulled from different directions. So, a way to get around that is just put maintenance staff within the department itself. The second one is the review, updating, and revision of the City of Southport Comprehensive Pedestrian Transportation Plan, which was done in February of 2014. This is an excellent plan. Even though it's nine years old at this time, it's really, if you haven't looked at it, it's really a well-done document. I had nothing to do with it for it. But I think a second look should be given at that document, and the information that can be used to very clearly help put together this non-vehicular transportation network system. Two other ones is the commitment to this safe, practical, and comprehensive pedestrian, bicycle, hiking, walking, sidewalk, crosswalk, and non-motorized vehicular system. Needs to be a strong commitment from the city to do this because it was a big item in terms of all the needs assessments. And a fourth one, which is a benefit, again, in terms of getting these accomplishes, there should be a nonprofit foundation established for the Parks and Recreation Department. People are much more willing to give donations to a nonprofit than they are to a local government from a trust standpoint and just whatever the reason is. Most of the successful Parks and Recreation Departments across the state have a nonprofit foundation that works with them. And that's a recommendation within this master plan. The fifth and final is personnel considerations. And there are five major ones of these that I'll mention just real quickly. One is, I've already talked about this, the establishment of this maintenance division within the Parks and Recreation Department. The second is reclassifying and renaming the current position of Recreation Program Specialist to a Senior Citizen Program Specialist, so that they're focusing strictly on providing programs and services for senior citizens. Creating and hiring a new full-time position of Recreation Program Supervisor. Right now, if you don't know it, there's only two employees in the City Parks and Recreation Department. Heather and one other person that does it all. There's no office staff. There's nobody else. It's just the two of them. Now, they are getting a third one, I believe, that's coming in maybe with this budget year or at this time, but that's still not. Just to give you an example, Carolina Beach is not that much bigger. They have 11 full-time Parks and Recreation people with their, for it. And the last two are creating and hiring a new full-time position of Youth and Teen Program Specialists. The demographics of the city are changing. There's still, obviously, a lot of elderly, but there's a lot more families and young people moving into the area. And there needs to be an emphasis upon providing programs and services for that age group. And there needs to be a person to do that. And then, the last one is creating and hiring a new full-time position of Administrative Assistant and Office Manager. Somebody that can do the nuts-and-bolt stuff within the office itself so the professional staff can be out servicing the people and not having to answer phones and such things as that. Not that those aren't important. And the last thing, it's just to reiterate again, that this is not a financial document, the master plan. It is a planning document. It doesn't commit the city to spending a dollar by adopting it. It just gives the Parks and Recreation Department and the city a planning tool, a blueprint, a guideline, a map, how to go forward, so that each year, as the budget process rolls around, Heather can go back, look at this document, identify the information that's in there, and be able to justify what's in her budget requests that come out. But no money is committed to by the adoption of this master plan. But without it, Heather can't apply for grants. She can apply, she won't get them. And it gives her the guidance based upon citizen input as to where she should go in the future. And that's the presentation.
Questions from the public or the board? And if you have a question from the public, you should probably give your question at the mic so everyone can hear it.
Can you hear me? My question is simple. We've just approved a kayak launch, and I didn't see that in your priorities. We've committed to it, and I'm delighted, but I didn't see it underscored. Why? My next question would be, how does your plan harmonize or consider something larger like the Greenway, Blue Way, the Gulligichi Trail? How is that incorporated in this? I would think you would overlay your requirements on something like that, considering the funding that's going in there, but I don't know. Thank you. Thank you.
I will address the kayak question. And again, the information that Dr. Hurstein gave you was not what he thinks. It was not what I think. It's what was identified for the citizens. And so, based on the survey results, you didn't really see a kayak launch, but that doesn't mean it's not given a priority. We, you know, we just got a grant, and we're going to build the kayak launch, which will enable us to further types of programs with the kayaks. Does that answer your question about that? As far as our document kind of going out, you know, I think Dr. Hurstein mentioned, you know, hugely, one of the major things was the pedestrian biking and connectivity. And so, yes, you know, it's not identified in here because this is specific, but, you know, not going outside the city. But, you know, definitely, we would look at opportunities to connect to any other type of Greenway spaces. And I think, you know, the county has been pretty involved in that, coming up with a green and blue space. And, you know, the North Carolina Parks and Recreation Association, this year, 2023, has been deemed the Year of the Trails. And so, there's a lot of money federally coming for trails and pedestrian access and bike paths to connect counties and the state. So, yes, we are not overlooking that type of connectivity. It is important. It's just the way he summarized it. He didn't point out a specific connecting spot.
Any other questions or any questions from the board?
Let me just add a little bit more on to that because one of the things I try to do with the document is not tie, in this case, Heather's hands down. But if you read the document, it does say that the non-vehicular transportation system should be coordinated with the other local governments, Brunswick County, and any other agency around, so that, yes, the intent would be certainly to tie into any other entity, but it specifically mentions to do that in the plan. It just doesn't put down the roads or the maps as exactly where it's going to go, but that's certainly the intention. And in terms of the kayak, it does, it is listed in here several times. Not the particular new one that's being built. That was kind of given that it's done. But the plan does talk about having additional water access sites and programs and services related to kayaking and other water sports.
Anyone else? Ma'am, if you could, you could come up to the podium?
I have just one question. When was the survey put out? I've been here four years and have not seen any survey concerning this. So, when was this put out?
It was put out in February, March.
This year?
Of 2022.
Last year? Okay. Because I, like I said, I've lived here four years, and I never saw, I never got a survey. Number two, I would like to comment on the, having the indoor/outdoor pool. As a person who's a senior that has undergone three hip surgeries... As a person who's a senior that has had, undergone three hip surgeries, as much as I would like to be able to hike, bike, and do all that, sometimes you have limitations, and an indoor/outdoor pool would be wonderful. I think for other senior citizens that are in my position that have had knee surgeries, knee replacements, hip replacements, shoulder replacements, what have you, and I think that's wonderful, but it's too bad that I didn't have a chance to participate in that survey. So, that's all I have.
We did run the survey March through June.
It was through April 30th.
Through April, March 1st through April 30th. You know, we did send it out, our communications team did send it out, and I know that there was a couple of blurbs in the paper, and we had hard copies. So, you know, if there's another way that we can, you know, communicate that, just, you know, so that you know what's going on, just let me know if that'll help.
So, I'd like to talk to a couple of things in the master plan, swimming and disc golf. So, I'll start with swimming. Lifelong competitive recreational swimmer, very excited to see it high on the list. I think that I can offer some insight into how expensive that's going to be. So, I moved from Charleston, where I was involved in master swimming, and trying to build a pool in Charleston, which with very large, hundreds of thousands of people, several large cities, and they found the best way to do that was to team up. So, the city of North Charleston actually teamed with Dorchester County School System to build a pool, a national level, a national level pool, on high school grounds using, you know, Dorchester County and the city of North Charleston, and it's been very successful, and it's completed and operational. So, I suggest that if the city wants to pursue this, that you really need to team with the county, Oak Island, Boiling Spring Lakes, to do that. The city cannot maintain nor collect the funds. It will be, for a basic 25-yard, eight-lane pool, $10 million, probably in today's funds, just to build a basic pool. That doesn't include fitness center, gymnasium, that kind of stuff. So, I suggest that, that is something that we should do, talk to the county and try to find land, probably outside of the city limits, because that pool, just a basic pool with basic locker rooms, will unfortunately not fit in the footprint that the master plan recommends. You're going to have to go somewhere else. So, that's my recommendation for the pool. On disc golf, I've recently rediscovered that for myself, and so I've been playing quite extensively. There are no 18-hole disc golf courses in Brunswick County. There are, Boiling Spring Lakes has a nine-hole course, and that is something that's really needed for Brunswick County, and I think Southport could help offer that. I know that Stevens Park was mentioned in that. It takes approximately, depending upon how wooded the area is going to be, anywhere from an acre to a half an acre per hole, and I'm not suggesting that we have to put it in the city limits, but that is something, again, that we could team up with, with the county. North Carolina has, is fourth in the country in the number of people who are registered with the Professional Disc Golf Association, fourth in the country. They're number three in the country on how many tournaments are held in the state, and that's as of the end of last year. There's a loose group of people that play disc golf in Brunswick County, there's almost 600 members of that on that Facebook group. So, I'm telling you, there's a lot of people that are playing disc golf in Southport, in and around Brunswick County. There's even a disc golf retail brick-and-mortar store in downtown Southport. So, I think, I think that it's probably underrepresented in the survey, and, but I think it's something the town can do, and it's relatively inexpensive. A disc basket's about $500, so for maybe 10K, you can actually put a, you can put a course in, if the land is already obtained by the city, and a lot of these courses are built by volunteers. So, I think there's an easy way to do that, and maintenance is relatively inexpensive because it's really largely a nature trail with some disc golf baskets in it, so something to think about.
Anyone else with questions? Thank you, Dr. Hurstein and Heather, for your presentation, and we have some wonderful work ahead of us. Madam Clerk?
There are some individuals who signed up to talk about the pool. Would you like them to go ahead now?
Well, public comment is next, and we can certainly have those that want to speak about the pool, will be fine. So, with public comment, try to keep it to three minutes, no more than five, please. This is a time to be informative, polite, respectful, and that type of thing. So, all right, Madam Clerk, who first would like to speak?
The first speaker is about disaster assistance, and it's Ms. Mary Gibson.
Thank you so much. Thank you, ma'am, for allowing me to speak, and I promise you I'm going to keep it in three minutes, and for all the information you do not get, it's online, I'm going to give you their website and 1-800 number, but I'm here to talk to you about what's available to small businesses as a result of Hurricane Ian hitting South Carolina. It made your county, along with other counties, two other counties in North Carolina eligible for economic injury. So, if you are a small business, and I request and urge every one of you to reach out to the small business and let them know that SBA, the Office of Small Business Administration Disaster Assistant, under the President Declaration in South Carolina, made small business eligible to receive, or to apply for eligible disaster economic injury loans. So, with that being said, August of 21st is the deadline for applying, so let's talk about economic injury as your working capital. Only in Brunswick, Robeson, and Columbus County for North Carolina of the small business and nonprofit organization can apply for this. It is a very low interest rate for the businesses, 3.04%, and for a nonprofit, it's 1.875%. You'll get it for as many as 30 years, and the collateral for anything less than $25,000 is zero. So, and you can borrow up to $2 million if you're in business as a small business. We have an office that's assisting one who were interested in it in Pauling, in Pauling Island, and their address there is 14363 Ocean Highway. They're open from 9:00 to 6:00 on Monday through Friday, they're closed Monday, Martin Luther King Day, and they are open on Saturday from 9:00 to noon, but they will be closing July, January the 19th for good. So, if you need some assistance putting your application together, you can go to this address. Now, you can apply online, and there are three ways you can apply, going to the center is one, the next way is online, is disaster assistant altogether, disasterloanassistance.sba.gov. That's online. And now, we do have a hard copy that you can get by calling 1-800-659-2955, and that number, you can call and get, you can get your question answered if you feel like you're not eligible and you want to get someone to help you out with making a decision whether you should apply or not. Again, the office will be closing January the 19th for those who need some assistance in putting the application. There are other sources that you can go to to get your assistance in completing the application, is through the SBA Small Business Development Center. So, you can go to the SBA Small Business Development Center. Again, this is working capital for those small businesses in these three counties. And that concludes my presentation. Do you have any question? Did I keep it to three minutes? Thank you.
Very well, thank you, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Bob Menches.
Thank you, Ms. Menches, appreciate that.
Thank you for allowing me to stand before you again. My name is Pat Kirkman, I live at 119 Park Avenue. ABC Board, three members. Beautification Committee, nine members. Forestry Committee, 11 members. Historical Preservation Commission, nine members. Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, nine members. Planning and Zoning Board, nine members. Zoning Board of Adjustments, nine members. Fifty-eight volunteer citizens are working for the city on these committees, and no one is being paid. Perhaps time has come to consider selection of a cemetery commission of seven members to work for the city, and no one will expect to be paid. What do we have to lose?
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Cheryl Lapala.
Hello, I'm Cheryl Lapala, I live at 316 West Brunswick Street in Southport, and I just, I wanted to offer some comments on the pool. For year, for several years now, I've been part of an informal group that has pushed for a pool to serve Southport citizens. Right now, the only indoor year-round pool that we have in the county is in Bolivia, and that's the Dynagor Fitness Center. It's a beautiful pool, I swam there today, so did Bob, so did Rich, but I hear from the Brunswick Senior Center here in Southport has been a very vocal and interested group of parties. There are tons of folks, such as the woman who spoke earlier, who need aquatic rehab opportunities, but they can't drive that far. I mean, it's 25 minutes out there, it's just too far. Several years ago, when they tore the Lord Street Gym down, we talked about, was it feasible to put a pool there? And this sort of reminds me of the proposal that's in this plan, which would be to put a pool where the old city gym is now, that's three-quarters of an acre. Now, the problem we ran into looking at the Lord Street site was the size, the, also the fact that it would be in a residential neighborhood, and that there'd be a lot of parking required, and it just would not be compatible with the, with the existing area of downtown Southport. Taylor Field, we talked about doing it there, and there was some opposition from neighbors there who were worried about those same issues. So, when it really gets down to it, Southport has got so many pressing priorities right now that are going to require a ton of resources, and you all, I commend you, you've got your jobs cut out for you, and I know that's why they call it public service. I think our best, the best possibility of us getting a year-round pool that will be of adequate scale for lap swimming, aquatic rehab, swim team, scuba training, and swimming lessons for kids who live so close to rivers, oceans, everything. Water safety is just so very important. So, Brunswick County, as part of their last Parks and Rec Plan, had a recommendation that the county study the feasibility of doing a Dynagor-style facility for the south part of the county and for the Ocean Isle area part of the county. And so, what I would suggest is that in any plan that you adopt, that you include a provision that basically voices Southport's support for a county initiative to cite a Dynagor-style facility to serve South Brunswick, which would include Southport, Oak Island, and Boiling Spring Lakes. So, you know, there is a three-acre tract of land, which is right next to Smithville Park, so you know, if you go down Dozier Cut, Smithville Park's there. That's somewhere like that, where you'd have adequate room for parking, BSL residents could get there, Oak Island could get there, we could get there, but it wouldn't be downtown. I don't think this would cost you anything to advocate for that, but simply say that you want to cooperate with those other municipalities to support a county-led initiative. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Thank you. I'll be brief, I hate public speaking. My name is Kelly Helbig, I'm the founder and volunteer director of the Jack Helbig Memorial Foundation. We're a nonprofit that serves Brunswick and New Hanover County and across the state, but our, our main work is here at home. Our mission is to prevent drowning. Over the years, we have built relationships with the Dynagor Fitness Aquatic Center, as that's our only public pool in our county, and we've worked with them to have programs to teach children to swim. We offer swim scholarships through our Brunswick School of Fish program. We've partnered with the YMCA in Wilmington to also bring Swim for Life to BCC, and that serves children five all the way through adults who need water safety and swim skills. However, since BCC is the only pool in our county, and there's such a need for its use, our programming is very limited in how we can get onto their schedule. So, this limits the amount of children that we can serve learning to swim, and as we know, there is water everywhere in our county, and it's imperative for all of us, all ages, to know how to be safer around water and have competent swim skills. Another pool, especially in Southport, would really help us serve more children, get them learning to swim, and that would help, you know, we can, we're very limited in how many people we can reach through our programming. I'll say, the Jack Helbig Memorial Foundation stands ready to support a pool initiative, whether it's here in Southport, or whether it's encompassing Boiling Spring Lakes, St. James, Oak Island, and Southport in the county. A need for a pool keeps coming up in master plans, it's in Southport, it's in Boiling Spring Lakes, master plan from 2018 to 2023, it's coming up in the Brunswick 2040 plans. There's a big push, it keeps coming up, trails, biking, walking, hiking, and swimming. Our county wants to get out there and be healthy, so I just want to give, lend our support from our foundation for a pool, and if you consider that in your programming and your planning, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Helbig. Madam Clerk, anyone else?
Someone is speaking on behalf of Dr. Paul Armstrong.
I'm obviously not Dr. Paul Armstrong, don't have the bowtie, but he couldn't be here tonight, so he drafted this letter and asked that I read it to you all. Dear Alderman, and he's our general surgeon at Dozier Hospital, a very good general surgeon, we're lucky to have him. I would like to note my support of a swimming facility in the Southport area with the greatest zeal. It is as a healthcare professional that I appeal to the attributes of this long sought project. As the oldest population in the state of North Carolina, Brunswick County has a problem that will continue to grow with age. The mobility that a pool provides to folks with significant arthritis and/or back issues is critical. By allowing them to be mobile and improve their cardiovascular status, the water achieves this with a minimal of pain. The data shows that by keeping active, we can reduce our healthcare costs to all. These individuals lead a more independent and active lifestyle than those who are forced to be sedentary. The distance to travel across this very large county isolates those in the Southport region from these benefits, simply because they have no means to access it. By adding another pool in our area, we can ease the chronic overcrowding present with the current facility, as well as simplify the senior as well as simplify the seniors' capabilities to get there. The rehab potential for those recovering from medical procedures is without question, but also having a pool in our part of the county has a social benefit by allowing a place to bind our communities together. Let's look to the future and plan for the needs we know will reap great rewards. Thank you for your kind attention. Sincerely, Paul Armstrong, M.D. Then I also just wanted to add one other comment that I had forgotten. Right now, I mean, our tax base in the county has grown exponentially with all the growth that we've seen. So that's another reason I see a county-led initiative as being economically more practical. So thank you very much.
I will text Dr. Armstrong and let him know that he'll be the first donor towards the county pool. So thank you for reading his letter. Madam Clerk.
No one else signed up, sir.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak that did not sign up? Thank you all. Very compelling public comments, and we appreciate all of you for being here for that. Next item on our agenda is the ethics statement, and I will read it. If any members know of any conflict of interest or the appearance of a conflict of interest concerning matters on the agenda, please so state at this time. Any, any conflicts? Okay. Hearing none. Item F, approval of the agenda. There are 13 items on our agenda, and I hope no one is superstitious in terms of unlucky numbers. If we need to admit one, we can, but I think we'll be okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Alderman Davis is our second. Second by Alderman Carroll. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay. Motion carried. Thank you. Item G, approval of the consent agenda. And in the consent agenda, we have the minutes from the regular board of Alderman meeting, and also the closed session from the December 21st meeting, and the regular meeting was December 8th. Is there a motion to approve? Mayor Pro Tim Mausteller is there, second. Second by Alderman Lombardi. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay. Motion carried. Thank you. Item H, special recognition, and this is the proclamation honoring Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. The pilot gave some excellent coverage about the Martin Luther King Memorial March returning. As you know, during COVID, it, it has not been, been held. And I'll go ahead and announce it now, and it'll be announced again, and you'll, you see it in the paper. It'll be Sunday, January 15th, at 1:00. And they will be meeting in, at the fire station here. And we're happy to have Rhonda Davis here this evening from the Martin Luther King Committee. There will be a program at 1:45 here in the police station. And so we welcome them back to, to this, this, this wonderful and spiritual event that's held in Southport and has been held every year up until recently. So I'll read the proclamation. Ms. Davis, I would have you stand with me if you feel up to it. City of Southport proclamation in honor of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Whereas Martin Luther King devoted his life to ending social injustices of segregation, poverty, and inequality. And whereas Martin Luther King preached nonviolence in his attempt to, to attain these righteous goals. And whereas Martin Luther King was awarded the Nobel Peace Prize in 1964 for his work in the civil rights movement of ending segregation with peaceful marches and nonviolence. And whereas this is the 55th anniversary of the assassination of Dr. King on April 4th, 1968, in Memphis, Tennessee, he was 39 years old. And whereas the 3rd Monday in January is a national holiday in remembrance and celebration of the life of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. And whereas the Dr. Martin Luther King Celebration Committee in Southport has selected the date of Sunday, January 25th, excuse me, January 15th, 2023, the actual birth anniversary of Dr. King to hold its celebration with an organized march. Whereas from his speech on August 28th, 1963, at the Lincoln Memorial, "The dream of Dr. King lives on, and we embrace it." And I quote, "I still have a dream. It is a dream deeply rooted in the American dream. I have a dream that one day this nation will rise up and live out the true meaning of its creed. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and the board of Alderman of Southport recognize and commemorate the life of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and his use of nonviolent means of protest against racial and social injustice, and his passion for mankind, for equality for all. And I, Joseph P. Haydom, M.D., mayor of the city of Southport, want to encourage all citizens to remember Dr. King and to participate in the activities that commemorate and celebrate his great life, adopted this day, the 12th day of January, 2023." Item one on our agenda is the authorization of the Wooton contract for the USDA project. This is an important project for our city. It's primarily on the west side, if I understand it correctly. It's the replacement of sewer pipes on that side. And one part of it is 18,000 feet of pipe, and another is 1,400 feet of, of pipe. So it's a, a very extensive, but a very necessary upgrade of our sewer system, make it more efficient, this pipe, and less INI. So I'd like to call on Mr. Walter Gross, the engineer, to come up and, and speak, lead the discussion.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, the board, and everyone here. The project, I'm the regional engineering manager for the Wooton Company, working out of our Wilmington office. And our mission is to provide engineering services based in the water community, so water, sewer, and the like. And we were asked to submit a proposal, which we did, and we're selected to perform this work. And it's, as the mayor mentioned, very critical for the improvement of the sewer system for the city of Southbury, Southbury, Southport, Freudian slip there. And the INI that the mayor had mentioned is a, a wonderful outcome of this. There is also another INI study that needs to be completed as far as remediation. This alone will help with the improvement of that condition where you're paying for water to be treated that is basically rainwater and other groundwater cycling through the system. So with that said, we completed a budget. We modified the original budget that was prepared by a previous engineering firm, and it is still within the budget that was originally presented to USDA. And we are hopeful that this will be approved, and we're looking forward to performing this work for the benefit of the city of Southport.
Are there any questions for the engineer, Mr. Gross?
I want to start off by saying that the first time I met these gentlemen is when we were trying to do a grant application. And a grant application is a very difficult process to get through. And it did not, it came off the rails. And this firm, these two gentlemen and their staff, came in at the last minute, within days, put the whole thing back on track. So anything I say now, I want to couch it that they saved us once already. I had some que, I had some questions about the contract. I've dealt with the, the city manager on that issue, about milestones, you know, when are we going to start? How the project is going to go? We'll get into that more later, I hope, in number eight, when we go through what's going to be a discussion about workshops, because I want to have a workshop that ties all the components of sewer together. One day, we all come in, we all talk about that, but we'll get to that at number eight. So I want to let everybody know that we're staying on top of the milestone issue, understanding that this company we've worked with before, very easy to work with, and so I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? I'll, I will entertain a motion. So the motion is to authorize the city manager and the city to move forward with this, with this contract to begin work on this west-side sewer project. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Lombardi. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gross. And the president is here. Thank you, sir, for being here also. Item two, a resolution in support of adopting the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. You've heard an excellent presentation. This is an action item, and I will call on the city manager to see if there's any further discussion that you would like to have on this.
I don't know if anybody has any additional questions or comments, but really, it's important that we adopt this master plan so that we can, excuse me, start applying for grants, getting money for this, starting to meet with, say, the county on different things, and that they know we're serious about this master plan. So I would certainly recommend we move forward with this as quickly as possible. If I could just also say, I appreciate Dr. Hellstein's work and Heather's work. It was a lot of work to put this together in the Park and Rec Commission, so thank you all.
Yes, thank you for that excellent presentation that we had. It was very enjoyable to listen to and, and to read. And any further questions from the board or comments?
Yeah. I do.
Yes. Alderman Davis.
Clearly, we need to pass this to be eligible for grants. It's extremely important that we do. However, in voting yes, I'd also like to call on this board to develop a plan of action for the swimming pool. Now, clearly, this city cannot construct it and operate it alone. But the county, in partnership with us and the other cities that are right around us, where the, the need has already been recognized and put into their master plan, could we make a commitment now that we will either form a task force, we will find a way to create an initiative to work with the county? Maybe at our retreat, that we discuss this and develop a clear-cut plan of action?
I think the, the swimming pool issue could be just a, a separate issue at our workshop. And so I think that would be a, a way to do that. And, and certainly, it's, it's needed. We've heard the public, and this has been a number of years now that this need has been not fully addressed, but has been expressed. So I will, Alderman Allen, I believe, had some comments.
Yeah. Let me make sure I can get the volume right. It's kind of tricky in here. Does everybody hear me okay? Yeah, I think, I appreciate the work and the effort that went into the developing of this plan. It is, I would describe it as being a very aspirational plan. I guess I just want to, you know, we, I've only had it in my possession now for a week, I guess, or less than that. And I've read through it, but I certainly haven't read all of it. You know, there, there are definitely parts of it that, the specifics of which cause me some concern. However, recognizing that it is an aspirational plan, I don't know that we need to, you know, sit around and hash out every single detail. But I just want to make sure that the, the citizens and the, and the other board members recognize that it is an aspirational plan. And it, I mean, to throw out two examples, I, I think the idea of constructing an indoor pool and recreation facility on the site of the current gym and park and rec building over on Atlantic is, is frankly, my initial reaction to that is it's a horrible idea. I just don't think that's the location for a facility of that size. I think that's going to greatly exacerbate a lot of the traffic and congestion issues that we're facing. I also don't understand it, if I'm, if I'm understanding it correctly, it recommends that we purchase the large vacant lot down at the Yacht Basin for park and rec use. I'm having a lot of trouble wrapping my mind around that concept. So, I mean, I get the, if, if we want to approve it tonight, I guess it's fine. I just, I want everybody to understand that this is not a detailed blueprint of what we're going to do, nor are we, as was pointed out at the beginning of the presentation, we're not committing in any way to, you know, immediately approve and fund everything that's in this document. Some of it we'll be able to do, some of it we're not going to be able to do. But I, I just want everybody to have realistic expectations about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Good discussion. So I guess the motion could be that the resolution in support of the, of adopting the Parks and Recreation Master Plan as an aspirational plan, and that the city does, does not plan to implement every aspect of it, nor could it afford to. But it is sort of a, a roadmap as we move further on in our improvement of our parks and recs system. And in, in terms of the, of the pool, I, I think it, a separate issue. And if you, you know, we just heard from, about a sewer project. And as you know, overall, we're regionalizing our sewer system. I think it's time to regionalize our pool system, too. I think with the county and with other cities, we, we can accomplish this goal. And, and Smithville Park is a great location. There's a lot of land out there, and it's a large county. And I, and I think that's what we should work towards for the future. So anyway, I will entertain a motion. Mayor Pro Tim. Mayor Pro Tim, is there a second? Second by Alderman Davis, any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
Can I take just a moment to again thank Dr. Hurstein for his work? He, while he's officially retired, he has continued to share his time and talents to help our community be a better place to live. And we appreciate you, you should know that. We appreciate our director.
Yes.
And we appreciate our director, Heather Hemphill, for all that she does to make this community better, and the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee, Advisory Board, and their work to make this community better. So I just wanted to acknowledge that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for those comments. Item three on our agenda is the appointments to the ABC Board. As liaison to the ABC Board, we met on, we met on Wednesday, and this board has interviewed seven candidates, and they have chosen three for the appointments. This board had recommended that they go from three board members to five board members, and that's what, that's what has been done. So the first appointment was Zach Zolki. He was a reappointment. He's been on the board for--
Oh, I'm sorry, sir. Don't we, we have a chance to do a motion here, right?
I'm just telling you who they recommended. Y'all vote on the slate.
Oh, I thought you said that these were appointed people.
No, these are the ones that they have recommended. He is, he is considered like a reappointment since he was already on there. But this is the slate. Y'all vote on it.
Right, okay.
Yeah. That's what we talked about earlier today as well. So Zach Zolki, he has managerial as well as retail experience, and he's been a member of the board. The second candidate on the slate is Adam Stedman. He is an attorney, a local attorney, a patent attorney, and had a desire to be a member of the ABC Board. And the third candidate that was recommended was Ryan Morgan. He's a retired military, is working now at Sunny Point, and he said he wanted to volunteer in some way in Southport. He said he has managed inventory, and he has managed personnel. So these are the three candidates, and I will entertain a motion if you support the ABC Board's recommendation.
I'd like to make another motion, sir.
Well, we have one motion. I guess we don't have a motion yet.
No, you don't. So I'm making a motion.
Okay.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that the three candidates be Adam, which you just mentioned, the incumbent, which you just mentioned, but Jim Poppy being the third nomination. This has been a 10-month saga. We need to bring some business professionalism into this whole thing. I don't want to go through the 10 months by month, but we, the, up until as of today, there seems to be a lack of policies and procedures that are written, that are there. And so Mr. Poppy comes, I believe he was a vice president of a company that dealt with ABC people, things. He brings a huge amount of experience to this. Adam is a lawyer. He brings a great experience to this, and the incumbent has been in the program for a while. So I guess I'm looking for a second.
Yes. So we have a motion. Is there a second? Okay, a second by Alderman Davis. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, I've got some discussion. John, do you want to go first? I just want to start by saying that in the city's '22, '23 budget, the estimated revenue to be received from the ABC store for both our general fund and the police department equals almost $550,000. This revenue is the equivalent of another five cents in property tax rate. We joke about why our ABC Board is so successful in high, such high sales. However, the continued growth rate is a measure of the success of the current ABC Board's leadership. So I just, I just want to say that I support the recommendations of the board.
I'd like, I'd like to just take a moment to speak about-- Yeah, I'd like to take a moment to talk just a bit about this process. We started, I don't know, back in May. I asked that we hold off on making appointment of, I believe at that time was Mr. Davis, really because I needed time to learn my ABCs. I needed to get a better, is that what they said? I needed to get a better understanding of exactly what I was appointing to. New on this board, didn't fully understand the roles of the ABC Board. And since that time, our board has been very gracious to entertain us in a workshop, to educate us. We had someone come from the state to share their knowledge with us about the processes. And so, you know, I guess I want to take this time to apologize for the way I behaved in May, and just say that I agree that this, this board is doing a good job. We are making money. That's exciting. I would agree that Mr. Poppy is a great candidate for the, the board. I will support him. I've said that before. We've had an opportunity to review the applications, and his experience, I think, is going to be very valuable. So that's where I am.
Yes, yes, we have a motion and a second. And this, as I say, and as you've heard, I'm the liaison for this board, and they did the interviews, and these are the three that they recommended, you know, to be on, on the board. This has been a very high-functioning ABC Board. If you look what they've done through a pandemic, they built a building, came under budget, and in December, they had over a half million dollars in sales. So, and they put in new policies and procedures over the past few months that are making a difference as well. So it is a great, it's a great board. This is, our ABC store is, like I say, is, is one of the most efficient and highly functioning parts of our city. So I'm very proud of them. So--
Mr. Mayor, have those policies and procedures been given to the employees? Do they know them?
Oh, absolutely, yes.
Well, I've talked to two of them in the last 24 hours, and they claim they've never seen them or heard of them.
So that's ironic, because I was at the meeting where those policies and procedures were printed and given out, and they stated they met with all the employees. And this is Mr. Davis, who's chairman of that committee, said they met with all the employees. So you're stating that two of the employees have never heard of any of the, any of the policies, procedures, and that type thing with respect to the ABC store?
Other than the one policies, one policy that they've heard orally, and it has actually taken place after recommendations from members of this board, is the lottery on the allocated liquor and the, to clean up the perception of what was happening with the allocated liquor. So now, if you follow the ABC website every single day, you will know when they're going to have the next lottery. But if you miss it a day, it could be announced, and you would miss it. But at least they held one, and I've gotten positive responses back from citizens that the ones that knew about it and got there thought the process went well. But that was the only policy that they know of.
Well, it's sort of ironic, because they've been, they do, you know, stocking, and they're doing different things with the, with the register, and they've hired a new employee and things like that. So it's, from the meetings that I attend from them, that's, that's not the feedback that I'm getting. So anyway, I will, we have a motion and a second, that the three candidates, I want to make sure I get that correct, Mr. Zach Zolki, Mr. Adam Stedman, and Mr. Jim Poppy. All in-- We've, we've had discussion. All in favor? Well, show of hands, please. Can I see the hands again, please? Yeah. Can I see the hands one more time? Because I saw one go, one go down. So one more time. Can I see the show of hands for this motion? Okay. Mayor Pro Tim, how many do you count? I saw three.
There were four.
Yeah. Aldo Lombardi, your hand was up, but did you, have you changed your vote?
I just want to clarify, this slate that we're voting on is not the slate that was recommended by the board of the ABC Board, correct?
Correct.
That, I think that was pretty clear when, when the mayor called for the vote, and it was four hands in the air.
No, it's up to Alderman Lombardi. We, you know, it went up and it went down, so I just want to be clear.
Well, why did it go down? Did we, did we--
Alderman Lombardi, would you explain your vote?
Yeah, I'll vote in favor. I, I'm a little confused, but--
I don't want anyone to be confused. So Mr. Zach Zolki, Adam Stedman, and Mr. Jim Poppy, those in favor of that slate--
I, I think--
You know-- Or, well, we did it twice, you know. He had his hand up and he came down. And I just want to make sure it's correct. So let me show of hands one last time. Okay, good. So we have four to two. So motion carried. Thank you. Nothing wrong. We have the time to be accurate and polite and justice and in the spirit of Dr. King, right? Thank you. Appointment to the planning board. I think this one will go quite smoothly, and I'll call on Mayor Pro Tim Masteller.
Thank you so much, Mayor. I, we had the opportunity to interview three candidates, and everybody did a good job. The interviews were great, and I, on behalf of the interview committee, I would like to make a motion to appoint Mr. Fred Fiss to serve as the full-time member on the planning board. Mr. Fiss is currently serving as a city alternate and has participated in countless work committees. Mr. Fiss's knowledge and experience are valuable assets to the planning board, and I would like to make that motion.
And by Mayor Pro Tim, second by Alderman Carroll. Any further discussion?
I have a question. I'm very much in favor of Mr. Fiss's appointment, but closer to my mouth. I'm in favor of Mr. Fiss's appointment, but he's moving from alternate to the board. Who's going to fill his position?
We will then advertise it. It has not been vacated yet.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously.
Could I say just one more thing?
Absolutely.
I just want to also do a special thank you to all the volunteers that step forward. While there are limited seats on the city's standing committees, all of the city's committee meetings are open to the public, and it is critical to our success that citizens volunteer their time by staying informed, attending the meetings, and sharing their thoughts and participating in our community dialogue.
Yes, that, that bears repeating many, many times. So thank you. Thank you for that. Okay, item, item five, appointment of a voting delegate to the North Carolina League of Municipalities. The league is an organization that helps cities develop excellence in governing and communication. And I've been the delegate in years past and would like to continue to do so. So if the board agree, agrees with that, I will entertain a motion. Motion by Alderman Allen, second by Alderman Davis. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. Thank you. I'd be proud to be representing Southport. So thank you. Item six, Yacht Basin dredging project. You know, we have our city dog bag, but it's time to start, I think of it as next logical step, start dredging around it. Mayor Pro Tim Masteller has been a proponent of this project. It's time for a survey, and I'll call on city manager Bonnie Theron to lead the discussion on this.
Yes. The last time the Yacht Basin was dredged would have been back in the 90s, and so it's been quite a while since that's been done. And I know before I even arrived here, the city's been talking about doing this for a while. There are grants available, but in order to even apply for the grant, you have to have a survey done of how much dredging material is even there. So that would be the first step in having this done. This would be for the city area. And so there's been a couple proposals that have been received to do that, and right now, I'd like to be able to at least have the monies authorized to have that done. It looks like it would run, well, there's actually three surveys that end up getting done. But if I could just have the money to start the initial calculation of the dredging material, at least then we could apply for the grant. And that would be in the amount of $4,300. Now, right now in the motion, you will note that some of it's coming from Park and Recreation, and some of it from Contract Services. But at least if we could start this part of the dredging survey, then we could have the opportunity to apply for that grant next round. And I'll take any questions or comments that anybody has.
Any questions from the board for the city manager? Okay. All right. We'll entertain a motion. So move. Okay. Multiple seconds, that's great. Motion by Alderman Masteller, second by Alderman Davis, and Alderman Allen. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. This will be a great project. Thank y'all, and thank those who began to work on this. We'll look forward to moving forward. Item seven, meals and beverage tax. How do we in some way monetize our visitors and our tourism for the benefit of the city? And so this is one of the ways to do so, and I'll call on our, our city manager.
Yes, during the past budget goal work-setting workshops, there's been discussions held about possibly having our state representatives go to the state legislature in, or, excuse me, just a moment, in order to raise, have the ability to raise the local sales tax for meal and beverages, because that's nothing that you as a board can authorize. It has to be approved by the General Assembly. It has been done in the past. It has gone to the state. It has always either not been voted on by the legislature or turned down. But it was a request from some of the board members that we take another possible look at this and perhaps bring it forward to our state representatives. If the, if it was passed, the money does have to be used towards tourism or infrastructure, something that's going to encourage tourism. So it's not like we can just use it for the general fund. It would have to be for a specific reason. general fund, it would have to be for a specific reason. So really, what you're doing tonight, if you care to, is authorizing this move forward to the state level for our state legislative delegates to bring it forward to the General Assembly.
Comment?
Thank you.
A question. Just for the members of the public to know, if the state legislature says yes, that's only the first step. The rest of the steps, we probably should spell out right now.
If you, are you alluding to the referendum?
Yeah.
Well, I gather, and again, I know that the city clerk did some research for me, that's up to the General Assembly to decide. Sometimes they have not mandated that this town do it, sometimes they have, and I think in most cases, they have, so that there is the possibility of a referendum, but it's not 100 percent that technically they could approve it without doing that. But usually, they do want the municipality to go through that.
Very good point, thank you, Alderman Davis. Any other questions or discussion on this? If not, there's a resolution in your packet, and I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution requesting support of a prepared meal tax. Alderman Lombardi, is there a second? I have a second by Alderman Carroll and by Mayor Pro Tim. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried, thank you. Item eight, scheduling board workshops.
Excuse me, Mayor Hayden, was the motion or the resolution that was accepted, was it to request a one-half percent or the 1%?
The, you know, it was, it was not stated, because there, I see that they're both one, so let's make it 1.5. And we need, we need every dime.
Only one.
I know, just teasing. 1%.
Yeah.
Well, actually, I should ask the board, how would y'all like, 1%? 1%? Okay, all right, great, thank you, board. Item eight, scheduling board workshops, these workshops are so important, and as Alderman Al mentioned, we, and, and I certainly plan to do this as well, we need workshops on our waterfront stabilization, on our water and sewer regionalization. At our workshops, we have every city department to present, and we will go through this, and we'll talk about every issue that the city is facing. This is our time to do it, because then, this is how we form, help to form our budget, what are our priorities, and then we go from there. And that will include the cemeteries, parks, everything. So, we plan to have robust workshops, and we have dates in our, in your packet, and you'll see on the back page that we, January 17th is city attorney interviews, January 19th, team building leadership training, and then budget strategic planning, that's an all-day, and then on February 7th, the right-of-way discussion and presentation, and then in February, we will be, we'll need to plan more days for workshops.
Those are possible dates.
Okay. Well, I, oh my goodness, very robust. So what we are hoping to do, and planning to do, if I looked at, look at my script here, is that, you know, Alderman Allen has recommended two meetings a month, so what we're going to do, I recommend that we have a, obviously a Board of Alderman meeting, and we also have a workshop, and that way we can, this is where the public can ask questions, there's give and take, and so there is a flow of information back and forth among the board, among the consultants, and among our citizens. So, the city manager has given us multiple dates that we can choose from already, and that's fantastic. Pass those down.
I understood Alderman Allen's suggestion that we actually have a set schedule, in other words, where we meet on the second Thursday, like, the fourth Thursday be the second meeting. Do we want to try to do it that way?
That's what I just passed out.
Okay.
So what I'm suggesting is it's the Friday before your regular meeting, so it's almost like helping to set the agenda, and so right now, there's tentative dates that we would have this over at Indian Trail. The only thing is, I need to know what time you want to do it. I mean, right now, we booked out Indian Trail for the entire day and night, which please don't let's do that, but if I could know, do you want to do mornings, you want to do afternoons, you know, do you want to do evenings? I don't know, but we need to know that too, but this is a tentative schedule, so that we already know, and you know what, if we don't have anything to workshop, we'll cancel the meeting, that's all.
Can we do mornings?
Whatever you all want, that's.
Yeah, I was going to ask, does staff have a preference?
We would, I'll be honest with you, I think we prefer not to do nights, because so many of us do nights, but again.
I agree.
If it's something you feel strongly should be at night, then we'll be there, because we know how important these are, we've got so much going on in the city.
I think it's fine for this agenda-setting meeting to be in the day, I mean, I get that, I know people are working, and I know it's inconvenient, but I mean, A, you can't have a meeting on Friday night, and our regular meeting's on Friday, so I don't, I don't think it's beyond appropriate to do it during the daytime.
What about 10 o'clock?
I thought.
Friday morning.
I thought y'all wanted to go from like 6:00 AM to 10:00 AM.
I'll be up.
You'll be up. 10:00 AM, does that sound good?
10 o'clock.
10 o'clock is fine, I mean, we can certainly work that out amongst ourselves later on, rather than this meeting. As long as we agree that we're going to have these meetings, and generally on these days, I think we can work out the times someplace else. I would like to have just a minute or two to talk about one particular workshop, not to go into depth on it, but just to give the people an idea what these things might look like, if that's okay.
Are we not trying to fix a time for one particular monthly meeting?
I think we can set the time now, you know, we're on it, let's continue, yeah.
That's what I'm asking.
I, speaking as, perhaps, well, with the exception of the mayor and staff, the only other person here with the job, if we, we could get started earlier, that would be, oh, and the priest, excuse me, if, the earlier we could get started, the better for me. So if we could get started at 9 o'clock, that would be great.
9 o'clock?
Yeah, because, yes.
Book it at 9:00 AM, thank you.
Okay, we'll do like a 9 to noon, and then we could release Indian Trail for other meetings.
Okay, thank you.
May I speak, sir?
Manaut, you said you wanted to this.
Yeah, so just to give you an idea of what we're talking about, just in the sewer system alone, maybe there's somebody on this board that's a lot smarter than, well, there's a lot of people on this board that are a lot smarter than me, but maybe they've been able to track this better than I have. I have tracked six things that are going on simultaneously, and this, and this board, and the staff have, I give them great compliments for we're moving forward, this is, these things have been hanging around for 30 years, and we're now moving forward, so this is all good stuff. But just to give you an example of what we're talking about, we have the lift station rehab process, we have the sewer replacement process, we have the Mulberry Branch Sewer Expansion process, the merger with the county on sewer issues, if you remember, we had a grant that we're looking now into that grant to look at the feasibility of having that merger, with it, and whether, when they would, might take it over, if we, if we actually vote to go in that direction. We have the Fine and Fix the I&amp;I Project, and we have the Creek Watchers. Some of these will cause other things to occur, so we have to do prioritization of that, like the Creek Watchers, they have, they claim that the three creeks are polluted, we have to figure out what that is. These gentlemen, when they're fixing the pipes, that's hopefully going to reduce the I&amp;I, and that may, will have an impact on the Mulberry Branch Sewer Process. So, let's get everybody in a room, let's have a discussion about these things, let's make sure everybody understands the timelines for each one, and how they impact each other, because there's been a tremendous amount of work, once again, by the board, and by the staff, and by some consultants, to help us get to this point, so now it's execution time. Thank you.
And we started on this in 2019, November 2019, when the, we changed directions, the city, as you remember, was going to build its own wastewater treatment facility, and we decided we needed to go, and that, that's one of the things that I campaigned on in 2019. So we're moving in that direction, and Alderman, you're exactly right, it is very complex, and lots of, lots of detail to it, but I think regionalization of our sewer system is the way to go, the upgrade of our sewer system, decreasing the I&amp;I, we're moving in that, moving in the right direction, so thank you, thank you for those comments. Item nine, city attorney selection process, and I'll call on our city manager.
Yes, you've received four proposals for city attorney, we did go out for proposals, and we got some very good options, but where we're at right now, we need to interview as soon as possible, I do have Tuesday set aside, starting at 8:30. The only question I need answered from all of you is, do all of you wish to be a part of those interviews on Tuesday? The other option is the staff will do those interviews, and then bring forward their recommendation for the top two, and then you would interview the top two, so whatever you want, we'll be glad to accommodate it, but it is, firms are set for Tuesday, starting at 9:00, we will be getting together at 8:30.
Where would those interviews take place?
They're going to be over at Nash, and I know that I've had, the fire substation, I'm sorry, and I know I've had questions, well, can't we do these in a closed session, but they're not employees, they're contract employee, firms, so no, you would have to do that in a public setting.
I would propose that the staff do the interviews, and any Alderman that want to come can come, and then the staff make a recommendation to us.
I would like.
Pro Tim?
I would like to be there and ask questions of them, this is, you know, an important, I believe, and one of the three items that we're responsible for, as far as staffing goes.
It, it's only four interviews, I mean, I really, I feel like we ought, we should be involved with all of them.
I agree, I would like to be there also.
As much time as I spend with the city attorney, you know, I certainly agree as well, and so whether we, we, obviously, if we need to notice a meeting, that we're all going to be there at the same time, or we can go, not a majority, but two at a time, and interview however, whatever mechanism we need to do, but I really think the board needs to meet these people and ask questions and that type of thing.
Madam Clerk, if we post tomorrow, we have plenty of time, right, to do all, then I'd recommend the whole board be there. The staff that are going to be a part of this will be there also, but then why don't, I think it's better that all of you be there, and then we could either, you know, give you our questions, or staff will have time to ask questions, so, that's fine.
And I'd like to ask our attorney right here, I mean, he's sitting right here, let him, Mr. Blanchard, if he would weigh in on this.
Sorry, this is probably news to, you guys seeing this in the, in the agenda here, I had an opportunity to speak with the mayor about this, yes, realize this is probably news to the folks out in the crowd, that this was in the agenda this month, I had the opportunity to speak with the mayor about it last month, and follow up some with Bonnie after that. I started working with you guys back in March of last year, and my primary focus of my practice is litigation. I do the town attorney work kind of as a sideline, so what I noticed over the last six or eight months, and I think you can probably see this in your, in your budget, I'm way under budget with you guys, and it's not because I'm a benevolent or generous person, it's because my litigation practice had picked up to the point that I don't have time to keep up with the, the level of volume that Southport needs, and the other thing was, the land use work, you have a tremendous amount of land use work, and that was the issue that the mayor and I spoke about, I raised this briefly when I was interviewing with, with the board, and that's the reason I think it's good for all of you to be in on the interviews, I think you would be better served to have someone who's, does land use as a lot more of their primary focus, and, and I think from looking, I took a brief look in the package, all of the people that are interviewing for this do land use work, and, you know, I'm familiar with, with, with all of them, so I'm glad you got good, good applicants for that, but it's been a pleasure working with you guys, I'm not leaving on bad terms with anybody or anything like that, we have a good relationship, it's just, I got too much work to do, and, and you've got too much work to do, and you need somebody who has more time to devote to it. So, thank you again for, for having me, I've got a litigation matter I'll continue to stay on, and if you get a claim through the League of Municipalities risk pool, again, odds are it'll come to me, because they're my biggest client, I think I do more of their work in this part of the state than anybody else, but thanks again for having me, and for not chasing me with pitchforks and flames when you're mad about what I had to say in the meetings, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blanchard, it's a pleasure working with you as well, and I know we will still stay in touch. So, Madam Clerk, you'll be able to notice that in time, and we'll all meet at the Nash, Nash Street Substation, and.
8:30.
8, 8:30?
Yes, we'll start 8:30 to get our, so again, I kind of emailed some of you, if you could get me the questions tomorrow, then that will help, because we're not working Monday, so that will expedite getting ourselves ready for the first firm that comes in at 9:00 AM. I'd just like two or three questions would be perfect.
Thank you, and, thank you, board. All right, item 10, Osprey Landing Electrical Service, I'll call on our city manager, and as well as our electrical superintendent, Ellie Pittenger, city manager.
Yes, we have Osprey Landing Development that's going to be coming into the city. I've asked Mr. Pittenger, who's in charge of our electrical system, to come and speak on this, because we're at a point where we need to make sure we have enough sufficient electricity to service not only the new people that'll be coming into the development, but with that addition, any current residents, so we have to add in some electrical lines, that's going to cost money, $185,000, certainly the electrical fund and the general fund portion of that, because it is an enterprise fund, it's separate from the general fund, certainly has enough money to do it, but we wanted to make sure we came forward to the board and explained all this, and receive your input, and answer any questions, so Mr. Pittenger, you're on.
Thank you very much, and good evening, Honorable Mayor and distinguished board. We have a new sub-development that's already in progress, that's their main entrance is going to be right off of Robert Ruark Drive, and we're looking at 70 to 80 units right off the bat in phase one, and that's this $185,500 prize sticker, and basically, that's because we need to add some bigger extension cords in order to feed this subdivision. This came about in mid to late September last year, otherwise, we would have gone to budget with it, but it was well after we had already done budget. We do have this money, should we decide that we do want to pay for it, and what I mean by that is, historically, the city has paid for the addition of and/or upgrades to the city's system, this is an improvement for our system, but it's needed because of the Osprey Landing being built, and there is no ordinance that we know of in place to say who should pay for something like this. Historically, it's the. like this. Historically, it's the city, it is our system, these will be our customers, and we will get our money back with our electric rates and then paying their electric bills. How long will that take? That's for the guys with the calculators to figure out. I'm just saying, we need more wire, and we need to restring a few, a couple of things in order to get these new customers in. And then, whatever amount of time the build-out will be, the Phase Two of that is about another 100 customers. We're looking at a total of 180 to 196 homes for both phases. And like I said, the next phase, and the next, how we're going to feed them, will be in another budget period. And the other thing I did want to say is, right now, it is not a stress on our substation. We can feed them. We just need to rearrange some of these drop cords in order to do that. And that's about all I have. And with the way things are going, and I was just going to say, this $185,000 could probably turn into $200,000 if we sit on it for too much longer with the inflation and the increasing of all the copper and the things that are happening out in the industry right now.
Any questions for the superintendent or the city manager?
I have a question for the city attorney. Okay, I'm just chatting with them. Can we, thank you, can we legally require that Osprey Landing either pay for this or participate in paying part of it? Is there, since we don't have an ordinance, is there a legal way to have them defray some of the cost?
I think there are probably workarounds that you can get to on that. I'll research that tomorrow and get back to you about it. One of the things I just talked about is that you potentially could have one of those special service district-type taxing districts for that. But I don't know if that's feasible or not. I'll have to take a look, find out, find out what the school of government's guidance on it is.
So there may be some legal maneuvering. So are you saying that we?
I just need to research it, get back to you.
Right. Okay, so the board, there's the motion for the $185,000, or you can say we want to wait until we hear back from the, I don't want to put words in your mouth, hear back from the city attorney, or what's your pleasure?
I'd make a motion to invest the $185,000. If we spend too much time on this and that number goes up, I just don't, only to find out that we still have to pay for it, doesn't make sense to me.
Can I just ask a quick question? Mr. Pittenger, I know you mentioned $200,000. I just, if you want a cushion, now's the time to ask so we don't have to come back. Or you think the 185 would do it?
That was my own personal speculation, and I am a bit paranoid.
Comfortable with 185,000?
If we were to write the purchase order tomorrow, it would be right at that figure.
Okay, all right. We have a motion by Alderman Carroll. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Lombardi. Any discussion?
For the opinion of the city attorney before we commit to spending $185,000.
All right, noted. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, one opposed, so five one. Okay, motion carried. Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent.
Thank you very much.
Item 11, the feasibility study, space needs for the police station in City Hall. You know, City Hall has an apartment annexed by the police department, and rightly so, because they have nowhere to grow, and where every department is growing. And I can give you an example. We used to have a conference room on the second floor, and the, one day, I went up to the office, and there's a wall there. And so they needed that space. But not having a conference room is like not having a living room in your home. We've had many great meetings in there, meeting with engineers, meeting with city staff, attorneys, and that type of thing. So they need their own separate building, separate space. And there's some historical significance to it as well. We had wonderful police chiefs in the past, including the one we have now. And I don't know if anyone remembers George McCracken, or Bob Gray, and God rest his soul, Police Chief Jerry Dove, and former mayor. So we have this wonderful heritage of police chiefs, and that's part of this process. So I'll call on Chief Coring, and also the city manager, to lead this discussion. Thank you.
I'll start. Just so you know, when I first came here to work in November, after looking around, and especially touring the police department, I was like, oh my God, we've got to do something here. Not only because they need space, City Hall needs space. What really makes me nervous is that the police department is not visible. You know, it's hard, if you're a tourist, or you're just coming in, or whatever, it's not an easy place to see visibly. And a police department, obviously, public safety has got to be a very visible building and location for people to find. Right now, you can't get into the police as a typical police department, because, you know, everything's coded up. You can't have it like that. And so the first thing, I think I said at one of the department heads' meetings, is it's time for you guys to leave and go on your own. Not only for now, because they can't even fit the officers they have, but 20 years down the road, you've got to build a facility that's going to work for your public safety people. And so before we even do anything, you've got to do a feasibility study. You have to know how much space do you need, what some options of where you can put it, what do you need for this police department, not just today, but 20 years from now. And then, the other key part of this is, if they move out, what happens to City Hall? How do we mesh this? How do we move everything? So the recommendation I have right now is to move forward with hiring a company who can do this, especially with the expertise in a police department. Because it takes really a large amount of knowledge to know what police departments need. Now, we did have a study, a company that was referred to us that's been used in other communities, Stuart Cooper and Noel, to do this feasibility. At least they gave us an estimate to do it, which was around $48,000 for both, for both of them, plus expenses. And certainly, in my 30-year career, and I built a lot of City Hall police stations, that is a very good price. But, and I will say this to the board, it does not have to be this firm. We could also go out for a request for proposal. But I want to make sure that you approve of the funding and the concept of doing this before I even go out for a request for proposal. Not to say you have to, because under contractual services, you don't have to, but at least give you that option. But I say, I'm for a new police station. I think the chief would agree.
So thank you. I'm just here to support any questions. I thank you, Madam City Manager, for that, and respect to the Board and Mayor. We appreciate you hearing our request. Since I've been the police chief going on five years this year already, we've done a lot of steps, moving and trying to be a very professional department that the citizens can be proud of, and that we can function safely under. So currently, when I became the police chief, we were in a smaller location downtown that was pretty much a temporary location when they had moved the police department out of the City Hall building because of the issues there. And there was a possibility and some discussion then to remodel that building and put the police department back there. But again, things happened, so they remained where they were when I came in. And that facility was not a functioning facility. There was a lot of issues. So we moved to the second floor of the City Hall where we are now. And the City Hall building's roughly a little over 10,000 square foot, and we are occupying about 1,800 square foot of that building, just a little over half of the second floor. And since we've been in there, we've already had to do some, creating some walls and some barriers to make it safe for officers and the public to send out of the building. But as the manager said, since she's been here, I had previous discussions with manager Hargrove at the time, some issues, growing pains we were seeing. It actually started with the interim manager that was before, Mr. Hargrove. He saw the need. So it's been slowly building, and we are a busy department. I know a lot of people think we're a little sleepy Southport, and a lot of things don't go on. And I would love to stand before you and tell you that. But there are multiple layers of concerns that we see, and safety is several of those. And so after speaking with our manager, she wanted us to try to entertain, to actually look to expand out. And, you know, I've been trying to push for more space, and it's hard trying to push my city manager's office out, and our clerk, you know, but everybody's kind of fighting for space. So certainly, she asked that we try to look at building our own facility, which I'm certainly excited to do. But there's a lot of moving parts with that, as she mentioned. So I feel like we probably would need a firm to help us with that, instead of, you know, people thinking, oh, well, the police chief and the police department, we'll throw in a wish list. But it's easier to have someone come in and look at our needs and talk, and, you know, study that out. We did that currently. When I was under our sheriff's office, we built a state-of-the-art 911 center. And when I worked under Sheriff Ingram, I was our 911 director and saw that project through. So there are a lot of steps to do this. So we would just appreciate your support. Any questions? And so I'll open the floor.
I have a couple of questions about that. And I should probably know the answers to this. But building a police department is not the same as building, as an office building.
Right.
You need a waterproof, fireproof vault.
Yes, sir.
You need walls on rooms that you can interview people that they can't kick through or climb through the ceiling.
Right.
There's a lot of unusual things that have to be put into that, wiring that goes into the rooms, videotape and all of that.
Right.
So does this, do we put all of that into the feasibility study? Or do we put, where do we put that stuff?
No, actually, that would be a part of the feasibility study.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, along with a possible location, they'll make recommendations, but they'll talk to the staff and get the needs.
They'll come in, Mr. Alderman, they'll interview all of the staff and hear from us, and then they'll reach out to different departments and look at kind of where we are and what we need. And then they'll kind of draft, look at our, they'll project where they think we should be, and outlook down the road. Like, when we built this facility, it wasn't built for the right then. It was, you know, 20 or 30 years. So they would do those same types of things. Because, you know, we do have to have things such as vaults for our evidence and a lot of security measures. So it's not like just building an office building, you know, for a dentist office.
I just didn't know if we're in the discussion, we put those things in?
Yes, sir.
And I'm glad I was educated tonight that it goes right up front. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
What do you need from us, Bonnie?
At this point, I just need, if you can make a motion about the dollars, actually, the proposed motion is in your packet. And then it's up to you, we could, Stuart Cooper receives, you know, to go ahead and start it, or you can say, Bonnie, do a request for proposal. I'll be glad to get that going, so we can get it out right away and bring you the results.
Going straight ahead with one company, or do you feel more comfortable with an RFP?
Well, I mean, I think this company is definitely an excellent company to do it. Mr. Burke has done a lot of research with the chief with other police stations. But I also talked to the person who gave us this company, and hey, we get it. You want to do a request for proposal? That's a problem. And if that seems fair, we'll go that route. We'll just have a three-week turnaround and come back. But at least we got the money, and we can get moving.
And three weeks, considering you've been waiting five years, is not much.
Yes, sir.
All right, the motion, Alderman?
Make a motion to go forward with this, please. I'm sorry, do I have to read this? I'm sorry. A motion to approve moving forward with a feasibility space need study done via an RFP, at a cost not to exceed $50,000, with $25,000 coming from the excess police salary funds. What that means is, we didn't hire people, so there's money left over. And $25,000 coming from the City Hall salary money, again, staff that we weren't able to hire, though we budgeted that money. Specifically, the city engineer, the director of development works, development services planner. Money is left over in these accounts due to late hiring personnel.
Is there a second? Second by Alderman Carroll. So basically, we're going for a request for proposal, instead of hiring this company. All in favor? Was any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I would like to thank the chief and the major for all the work they did on this. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes, yes, thank you, Chief. Item 12, Historic Preservation Commission, Rules of Procedure. We're very proud of this commission, the Historic Preservation Commission, behind public health and safety. Next is Historic Preservation. And how do we work with the private sector to preserve our landmarks, our churches, our homes, our cemeteries, our waterfront? So I'd like to call on Travis Henley, and also the chairman of that commission, Chief Charles Drew, lead the discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. Good evening. I gave Chairman Chief Drew the night off, so I'll take this one. Before you tonight, for your consideration is a draft of the City of Southport Historic Preservation Commission's Rules of Procedure. These rules were drafted collaboratively by the commission at their December 7, 2022 meeting, using examples from around the state for other historic preservation commissions as a guide, particularly the City of Wilmington's. Upon staff compiling the recommendations of the commission, draft of the rules was presented to the commission at their January 4, 2023 meeting, and were adopted in the form they are presented to you tonight. And a shout out to Mo Meehan, city planner. She's the one who kind of led that effort. Agreed. Rules of Procedure includes five articles. First is Members, Officers, and Duties, which does exactly what it sounds like it does. The regular conduct of meetings, consideration of applications, that is, the process by which the board considers, by the board, I mean the commission, considers applications before it in public hearings. Application procedures, which is how applications are filed with us, the planners, for consideration on the HPC's agenda, and the powers available to the commission in their decision-making capacity. And then procedures for amendments to the rules of procedure that are before you. The rules of procedure, upon adoption by this board, will be the only feature of the HPC adopted in the near term. The commission is working very quickly towards identifying the boundaries of the local historic district, and also towards the architectural and the other standards that form the meat of why we have a historic district. Through that process, there may need to be updates to these rules of procedure. As you'll note, in Article 5 of the rules of procedure, the Board of Alderman is the final decision-maker on any of those updates, and staff and the commission will work together and bring forward those amendments to you if they're needed. As you'll see in the rules of procedure, the Historic Preservation Commission typically meets on the first Wednesday of every month at 4:00 PM, typically at Indian Trail or at another suitable location. There is already a special meeting called on January 23 at 2:00 PM to continue their work and maintain the momentum that they've already established. And I would say that's a considerable amount of momentum. The rules of procedure, before you, further legitimizes those efforts as they move into the core functions of the group. Staff is available to answer any questions. Otherwise, I respectfully ask for your consideration of a motion to adopt the rules of procedure as they are presented to you tonight.
Okay, so we have a motion to accept their rules of procedure, and?
A second.
Okay, so Alderman Carroll and Mayor Pro Tem. Is there any further discussion on this? This is very exciting for our city. And Mayor Pro Tem, thank you for helping to push this through. We had a very excellent Zoom meeting on this, and with the historic Wilmington found- We had a, a very excellent Zoom meeting on this and with the historic Wilmington Foundation. And I just want to read their motto, which I thought was fantastic. Says, protecting and preserving the irreplaceable in Wilmington and the Lower Cape Fear Region since 1966. So it's great to be a part of that. And I appreciate the work that's, that's been done on this. So thank you, Travis, for the work that the planning department has done. Again, Mayor Pro Tim and all who've been involved and those who are serving on this commission. Thank you. So any further discussion? All in favor? I'm sure it's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 13, contract with Olson Associates for Shoreline Stabilization Project. This is, this has been a long time coming. This is a worldwide problem, climate change. How do we protect, in particular, the whole southeast? How do we protect our waterfront? So we fortunately now have, we have money in the, in the bank literally for this. And I will call on our city manager to talk about the contract with Olson.
Yes, Olson Associates was awarded the contract at your regular meeting of July 14 of '22. Basically, we got $5 million in funding for this project. As the mayor says, we've been talking about doing this for quite a long time. We already have had a kickoff meeting, but they have provided a contract with some provisions in there that you need to approve. That would complete the, the contract and we can get moving forward on this. Now, the project manager, Chris Creed, could not be with us tonight. But if there are questions that you have for him, the city clerk will give him a call and we can get the answer as quickly as possible. So he's on standby for us. So again, what you would be doing is we need you to just authorize either the mayor or myself to sign off on this contract.
So are there any questions in particular? This is something that we have been trying to do for a long time. So I think it's best to, to have a motion to approve the contract with Olson Associates. Alderman Allen. And then there's a second by Mayor Pro Tim and Robert Carroll. Tied. Any further discussion? All in favor? And again, I think this is unanimous also. This is a great project. It's been in the works for a long time, a good report in your packet. So thank you, thank you, board, for this. Item J, managers' report.
I just have a few things. First of all, I want to thank Chief Drew and the entire fire department for hosting us here this evening. We really appreciate it. The other item I have is revaluation. I know all of you just can't wait to see what that's going to come up. Just so you know, every four years by state law, revaluation is done in this community, actually statewide, all the communities. It was supposed to be coming in any minute now, but I, we just found out that it looks like you're not going to get notices until the end of January, maybe beginning of February, somewhere in there. I think all of you have read the values of these properties. All you have to do is see what's been happening in the real estate market are going to go quite high. I mean, compared to what, you know, you, you probably had your last revaluation. But you have to remember, and this is really key every time I've been and we go through this, don't panic and look at your bill, revaluation amount and go, oh, I think I'll multiply it times the current tax rate and see what the taxes are going to be. Don't do that because that is not the tax rate that has been established by this board. They won't do that until, you know, the next fiscal year, July. So you don't panic and don't multiply that. We have a whole fact sheet that was put on the website to answer all your questions about how revow works, who you contact. But please don't do that because you're going to just probably go through the roof. Typically, what happens is the values or what's called a grand list, you know, rise because of the values, which should. I'm not saying I'm going to guarantee this, but usually 90% of the time what happens, your tax rate goes down. But the values, you know, because of the way the values and the grand list work. So I just wanted to say that, Mayor, because I've been in towns where the phones ring off the hook. So we do have a fact sheet and I want to thank Cheyenne for putting that together and it's on the website. And then the only other thing I have is good news. I wish Heather and Ellie were still here. I'm very pleased to tell the board, we have a number of service awards. Heather's been with us, Director Parks and Recreation, for 24 years. Ellie, who is here, who is in charge of electrical, has been with us 20 years this month. And where did Randy go? Randy disappears. Randy, who's working up the TV cameras and all that, is our communications director, just had a seven-year award. So I want to just give all the, even though they're not here, give them a round of applause. Staying with government that long, with one job, that's a, an undertaking. So thank you, Mayor. That's all I have. There's Mr. Randy. So I just said, congratulations on your seven years. Well done. I know, I know.
All right. Thank you, city manager. Committee reports, I'll start with Alderman Allen. Alderman Carroll. Alderman Al.
Yes, on the 25th, Ellie. And I am going to drive up to Wilson to go to the North Carolina Eastern Municipal Power Meeting. And we're going to be talking about rates because eventually in the next month or two, we're going to have a couple of rate meetings here for the city for water and sewer. We're going to look at electric. We do this about once a year, John?
We're, we're, we are reviewing our utility rates every quarter.
Yeah. Well, and we're going to get the electrical stuff to figure out what, what we pay, what does that get us, what are our options, all of those things you review. I just want to let you know that we're in that process.
Thank you. It's a good report. Alderman Davis.
The forestry committee met this week and yesterday we planted 12 trees at Taylor Park, Taylor Field Park. And they're substantial trees. They are along the walking jogging fitness trail, around the pavilion and around the perimeter, and they literally are transformative to that landscape. They will, in a very short period of time, provide shade for people using the park. And we particularly thank the Public Works Department for its, the forestry committee does not dig holes for live oaks, let me tell you. And there are eight live oaks, two red oaks and two knuckle oaks that are among the 12, that are the 12. Also, the forestry committee received a donation from the Betty Timberlake Foundation of $750. These go toward purchase of the trees. Betty was a longtime member of the forestry committee and in her will, she established this foundation to help support the forestry committee. And I'd like to call everybody's attention to the city newsletter for February, which will come out February the 1st. There will be an article on the Live Oak Society, which thanks to Citizen Carol Bailey, we found out about. This is a national society that recognizes large, old, significant live oaks. The oaks are the members of the Live Oak Society. And we feel like we probably have a lot of them. And so the forestry committee will be doing a survey. Anybody who has a, a big live oak in the right of way or on your property and you think you might have one that qualifies for membership, four and a half feet up, measure all around and if it's eight feet, it will qualify. The president of the society is, of course, a tree and it's a live oak and it's 40 feet around. So I don't think we can, we have a tree that can oust the president, at least not yet. But Roxy Smith will be writing that article. Please look at it. It will substantially increase your appreciation for the trees in this town. That's it.
Thank you. Alderman Lombardi.
Yes, this past Saturday, beautification volunteers removed Christmas decorations and prepared all the storage bins to store them in safely. I believe that storing them and taking them down is as much work as installing them. And we also did some trimming of shrubbery around town. And that was about it. If we didn't get that many volunteers this time, I think it's because of the holidays. But anyway, thank you for all the volunteers who make this possible. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Masala.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick things. The planning board's next regular meeting is next week, January 19. As a reminder, the location for this meeting has changed. The January meeting has been moved to the Indian Trail Meeting Hall because the, the community building's floors are being replaced. Also, the Parks and Rec Advisory Board regular meeting is scheduled each month on the second Tuesday at 6:30 at the Indian Trail Meeting Hall. And remember, the public is always invited. That's all I got.
Thank you. Committee reports are, I mean, actually, part of the committee reports are also in your packet, including an update from up your arts. Item L, mayor's comments. Just have a few. I want to thank the city staff for putting together this agenda. It was a very good meeting tonight. I want to thank Chief Drew for hosting us. Thank you so much. It's a great venue here. Want to thank our community, community relations and our public information, our city clerk having this, having the equipment here. And actually, sound is pretty good tonight, so thank you. Want to congratulate our hospital and I want to make sure that we all support our hospital. They received four stars. There was a very nice article by Renee Spencer in the Star News, so thank you, Ms. Spencer. And it was mostly due to the emergency room and so why we got such a good rating. So thank you for that, Alderman Carroll. That's the only reason I said it. And congratulate the board, yes, absolutely on, on that as well. Hospital board. Take your best shot. You've heard that before. Not only all your immunizations, not just COVID, flu. Protect yourself, your family. Develop good habits since the beginning of the year. Get that yearly physical. We also know that COVID variant is on the rise, so be careful, be careful with that and do the best you can to stay well. And again, remember Martin Luther King, the March, Memorial March, 1:00 PM on Sunday. I want to thank the board for their hard work and thank the city manager. I thought this was a very well-prepared agenda, so thank you for that. And we look, we look forward to the future and next month as well. So thank you. Staff reports are in your, in your packet. Item N, board comments. Alderman Allen. Alderman Carroll. Alderman Al. Alderman Davis.
I'd like to ask that at our next meeting, we discuss and take action on what we can do about the city cemeteries. Citizen Pat Kurtman probably feels that she's been talking into an echo chamber for well over a year. There is a need for a cemetery commission. And so when we have our workshop, let's talk about how.
Yeah, that will be on the workshop. Yeah, I think I mentioned that earlier. It would be on our workshop, so definitely. And we will get, we will get something started. We have a plan written and, and definitely, I've said many times, cemeteries are important and we certainly will do that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Lombardi.
Yes, I would like to thank our city manager for getting things going, things that we should have been addressed many, many, many years ago. Thank you very much, Bonnie.
Alderman Masala. So item O, closed session. The board will go into closed session to discuss a personnel issue, so I'll ask for a motion to go into closed session. Mayor Pro Tim Masala and second by Alderman Carroll. All in favor? Okay, we will go into closed session. Thank you. Well, you know, I thought we did pretty well.
I'm kidding you. Are you kidding me? No, that's fantastic. But it still was going to bust you.
The Parks and Rec thing kind of went a little long there.
I will entertain a motion to go back into open session and out of closed session. We have multiple motions. Alderman Hosteller, second by Alderman Allen. All in favor? Great, thank you. In our closed session, we discussed the city manager position and the board has made multiple recommendations that they plan to vote on. First of all, Bonnie Theron will go from interim city manager to city manager. That will begin June, excuse me, January 17th and go through June, at least through June 30th, 2024. So very happy about that. Her salary will be at $145,000. She will have four weeks vacation and she will have two weeks sick leave and there will be some other things that will go into the motion. The other decision that the board has made is to have a assistant city manager and they will be under the supervisory role of the city manager and that salary will not exceed $91,325. So I will entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to hire Bonnie Theron as our full-time city manager effective January 17th at a salary of $145,000. We will give her two weeks, six leave, four weeks holiday. We will continue the $300 per month vehicle allowance and we will have no requirement that she live within the city limits or ETJ during her time here. In addition, I'd move to create the position of assistant city manager at a salary not to exceed $91,325.08.
Can I make a friendly amendment to that, sir? And that would be that we changed the wording that we're going to front load the contract by the two weeks of sick leave as opposed to earn it over the course of the period of time?
Yes, yep.
Excellent. Motion by Alderman Carroll, very nice, and second by Mayor Pro Tim Hosteller. Is there any further discussion on this? This is a great, great meeting and a great day for Southport. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye!
And I believe it'll be unanimous. Any opposed? Motion carried. Congratulations.
If I can, Mayor, I just wanted to thank the board for the support, but I'm going to blame all the staff for this. You know, we have a lot of work to do, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to expect you to be there to help make this city successful. So I look at all of you, but I look at all of you too, to help make that happen because that's what we're here for, is making it the best for Southport. So, thank you.
Thank you. And city manager, thank you for your willingness to go from interim to full city manager. Yes, I know you are, but we appreciate this so much. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Alderman Allen, is there a second? Mayor Pro Tim, all in favor? Motion carried. Congratulations. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.